Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call a February 15th, 2022 city council meeting for the city of Cannon Falls to order. Could we have roll call, please?
Ringold.
Aye. Here.
Duncan.
Here.
Gesmi.
Aye. Here.
Ronenberger.
Here.
Lundell.
Here.
Montgomery.
Here.
Althoff.
Here. With your eyes for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, on the agenda, I got, I'm gonna have one addition. Brad Anderson, we're gonna put him under presentations, first thing under presentations. Is there anybody else that has any corrections or additions? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the agenda with the addition of Brad Anderson?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ringold, second by Gesmi to approve the agenda with the addition. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? Carried. Okay, public input, there's nobody on the list, so we will bypass public input. And we'll move right to a public hearing. Item A is Resolution 2614, certifying unpaid utility charges to be collected with taxes. Neil, you wanna take that?
Sure. Well, quarterly, we put together a list of past due water and sewer bills. The list will get modified if people come in and pay their bills, but this gives them an opportunity to discuss the item, discuss their bill in front of the council, and you can take their comments. Otherwise, we do this every quarter, certify to the county.
Okay, we'll open the public hearing on Resolution 2614. Anybody would like to speak about that? Second call, third and final call. Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing on Resolution 2614, and we take a motion that certifies unpaid utility bills to be collected with taxes. Is there a motion? So moved.
Second.
Motion by Lundell and a second by Montgomery to approve Resolution 2614. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Carried. Okay, Resolution 2619 is approving sponsoring the Small Cities Development Program, final application. We got Karen here from SEMCRA. You wanna come up and talk to us?
Good evening. I'm Karen Ducharme. I've been in front of you a couple times now. We surveyed the city of Cannon Falls last summer, and we submitted and prepared a, prepared and submitted a preliminary proposals to the Small Cities Development Program for housing rehab, and that was rated as competitive. We got that rating in December, so tonight, we're here to finalize the steps for the full application. We did a debriefing call, which is just standard protocol that we do with DED as part of the preparation for the full application, and they didn't have any adjustments to the application to make except for one. And in the preliminary proposal, we had different income tiers, so we had extremely low income, very low income, and just low income. So you have to be low to moderate income to be eligible for the program, and they had us get rid of those very low and extremely low income tiers. So that got rid of the owner's match components. So now, it's just if you're at or below 80% of the county median income, which is the threshold to be eligible for the program, then you get 100% of your project up to $25,000 as a 10-year deferred loan. So they're trying to make it as advantageous for the homeowner as possible. So if they, there would be an owner's match if somebody had a project that was over $25,000, and given the current market today that we're seeing that happen. So we will probably still have owner matches unless something very drastic happens in the market in terms of construction costs. But that's the only change that we made. The total application is for $591,675. That's the total request. The maximum we can request on a housing rehab application is $600,000. So I, they did encourage me to try to make that get to $600,000, and there was just, there's no way I can do that without cutting the average construction cost on our project, and I didn't wanna do that. So we can anticipate that this, this money will go quickly in the city. We're already getting a lot of interest in building a waiting list without even doing a full mailing yet. So we can anticipate that in the next few years, we would probably wanna do another application for Cannon Falls. And then, at that time, tie in the rental. So we did not do any rental as part of this application because we had such strong interest on the housing side, on the owner-occupied side. So again, these monies would be deferred, forgivable 10 after 10 years. So if somebody is no longer the owner and the resident of the property, so they have to meet both conditions. So if they rent it out, but they're still the owner, they have to pay the money back, and that money comes back and would be in a pool for Cannon Falls for other homes to be rehabbed. It could be used as leverage on a future grant, that sort of thing. So in terms of next steps, we will submit the application mid-March is when it's due, and then we would anticipate hearing May-June timeframe, and then we would go through the environmental review process, and then there's a set of policies and procedures that have to be adopted by the council as part of that. And then, that's when we would have you adopt administrative contract for some sort of administrative behalf of the city. So it is the city's grant, but we're administering it on the city's behalf. Are there any questions?
You say it's five, oh, 592?
It's just under 592,000 is the grant request. The total anticipated project cost is just around 659,000. So we're anticipating some owner's matches, like I had said.
Are these strictly single-family homes, or are they twin homes, or?
It's strictly single-family, owner-occupied.
Okay, all right.
We can get into the twin homes that are owner-occupied as part of rental. That's how that meets that classification.
Any other questions from the council?
So as part of the package tonight, there's several approvals. There's a local government resolution. There's a citizen participation plan, so we had to advertise, and we did a public hearing notice in the Cannon Falls beacon. There's a conflict of interest disclosure for the mayor to sign. We do have to screen for conflict of disclosure, or conflict of interest for anyone that might have, you know, if you have an EMT that's getting paid by the city and their owner-occupied want to participate in the program, we have to screen for that and go through a process for that. So basically, there's no conflict of interest because they are not, the city's not making the decisions on the applicants. We're following a set of procedures and doing, we're processing applications on a first-come, first-served basis, based on date of when we receive that application. So we have, we have a pretty set process on that. And then, there's just a couple signature pages as part of the application that we're asking for approval tonight as well.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's open the public hearing on Resolution 2619. Is there anything, anybody that'd like to approach the council for us approving or sponsoring the Small Cities Development Program? Second call, third and final call. Hearing none. Is there a motion on Resolution 2619?
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion by Ringold, second by Lundell to approve sponsoring the Small Cities Development Program, final application, Resolution 2619. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Carried. Thanks, Karen.
Thank you.
Okay, let's get into presentations. We added Brad. Brad, you're up.
They only put me ahead of you because they knew yours was way better.
Thank you, and thank you, Karen. Tomorrow morning, I will be in a meeting with Karen with Southeast Minnesota Housing Redevelopment. So I sit on that board also and enjoy working on housing, which nobody told me when I went for county commissioner that I had to know all that. Thank you for your service. Being a public servant right now isn't really easy. There's a lot of challenges to it, and I appreciate all of you stepping up to do that. Just a couple things I'm gonna talk about tonight. I wanted to just talk a little bit about redistricting that the county is gonna have to do, and of course, some of you know, just today, the redistricting for the state came out. Goodyear County got moved from CD2, or Congressional District 2, to Congressional District 1. So we're with the rest of Southeast Minnesota over to about Mankato, to the Iowa line, and then diagonally up this way. So that got switched. And then, on a, on a local or the state side, we did end up getting split up just a little bit more. We used to have Senator Goggan, Haley, and Draskowski kinda on the east and across the southern part, and then there were a couple townships on the west side and the city of Dennison, which were with a different district, and were Senator Duckworth and Representative Graffalo represent that side. We got another one because they switched this around a little bit. We still have some of, with Draskowski's old district, some with Haley's. We'll have the senator over on that side. We'll still have the two townships with the senator and representative on this side like we did before, but four county, or four townships in Kenyon got carved out on the southwest corner of the county, and they're getting paired with another senator and representative from farther to the southwest. So we got carved up just a little bit. From the county side, I handed out this. Some people have it. I don't have enough for everybody, but I'll leave this one when I'm done. We had, as you know how redistricting works, there's the 10% threshold where everybody has to be within 10%, and on this first page, it kinda shows you that the population in each district as it stands, the average of 95, 16, and then the deviation from that could be 952, and the range for that, 85, 65 to 10,006, 468. And District 4, which is Commissioner Majoris's district, which is kinda the east Florence, Lake City, and then across down through and to Zambrota, is, is a little bit too high. So we have to take some out of that one. And there's a couple, there's three different options that kinda got put in front of us. We'll have a public hearing on it coming up in, here in March, I think it is, and then we have to make a final decision a little later than that. But there was kinda three options put forward, so one of them was to take Featherstone Township out of Commissioner District 4 and put it with District 1, which is Commissioner Flanders, who has Redwing and Welch, part of Redwing and Welch, and that would, you know, work. The second one would be to add Featherstone to the district I serve, which is District 2, and that would do the same thing, takes, takes away from Majoris's adds to mine or District 2. Then the third one was just a little bit more of a sweep, where you give Featherstone to District 1, you add Warsaw and Dennison to District 2, and take Mineola and add it to Commissioner Gressis, District 3. Now, they all work. They all meet the needs that we need to do. Difference is in, in option 1, three commissioners have to run. Two are up. District 2 and District 4 are up this year to be reelected or to be open seats, and that would have three districts running then. The second one, there's just District 2 and District 4 that would run. And then the last one, there are four commissioners that would have to run because they all change enough. So just so you're aware, we're working on this. There will be a public hearing. If you have thoughts on it, just let us know. That's the only, that's the only reason I'm bringing it to you. I don't want any, it doesn't matter to me how we do it. It does matter to some people who don't wanna run after they've ran two years and, or two terms in a row here, so. But that's just information. The last page I gave you has our five-year road plan that was just approved recently. And I, you know, you guys all know, we're doing a lot of work in Cannon Falls this coming year. It's gonna be, it's gonna be a little bit interesting as we work and MinDOT works and Highway 52 is getting worked on, and, and we cover all those bases. But, you know, from the county's perspective, once we go into a, a city like this and we got work to do, it's best we get all of it done and get out of here and don't come back for another 10 years. So I think that's the approach we've kinda taken. We're gonna get a lot of, a lot of the little roads around town fixed up. We're gonna get 24 done. Not exactly sure if the 14 extension with the 52 project, if that will happen, if that will actually get paved and opened in '22, or it might be '23. I'm thinking it's gonna be '23 before they get that all done. They're gonna be really concentrating on the main line 52, 'cause whatever they do on that road, they have to have it back open next winter for two lanes going. They can't have it head-to-head over winter. They won't let them do that. So they got a lot of work there. I got a feeling they're gonna, they got a long ways. The 14 road connection is really good, looks nice, so I think we're gonna work on that. The other piece of this that I always wanna point to is under the brown section where it talks about where the funding comes from, the lost is not lost money on the road that we picked up. That's the local option, sales tax, which we put on, which is the half-cent sales tax. And you can see that that, over the course of these, is 3.2 million. It is truly, 1/3 of our road construction money is, is by that. And that's not, we didn't take anything away. That's all new money. That's all going into our roads to bring them up to speed. That's more than we thought it was gonna be. When we first put it in place, the projections were more like 2.2, 2.3 million. It's been running 3.2, and I can tell you, in 2021, that was really 3.9 million is what it amounted to. So that's a lot of, a lot of commerce happening in Goodyear County, and a half a cent sales tax generates that kinda dollars. So it has really beefed up our road projects. We're gonna get Goodyear County's roads in a lot better shape, and then we'll see where we go from there. Costs have gone up. I can tell you that when we bid the paving projects this year, the, the increase in bituminous was $3 to $5 a ton higher. So it will, it will affect how far those dollars go. But without that, you would take 1/3 of these projects off of these pages, and roads would just continually deteriorate. So we're glad that's working, and it seems to be funding that. Probably, one thing I got more raz about lately was the public notices when we went out for bids to the papers. And I, and I support newspapers, don't get me wrong, but I will tell you that the Association of Minnesota Counties for years has been pushing to let us do electronic public notices, because we put them all on our website anyway. They're there. You can get them. You can sign up on our webpage for notify me, and it will send every public notice we put out directly to you on your phone, to an email, to a text, whatever you want it. We can get it to you immediately, and it costs nothing to do it. And I understand the newspaper side of it. It was a significant savings of the bidding this year, so we went with the Zambrota news for that public notice. But it is available. You can go right on our website, sign up, notify me. You can get every meeting we have. You can get all the agendas you want. It's all right there. So I encourage people, if they really wanna know what's going on, just sign up and get it, and you'll have it. And like me, yeah, delete a lot of them because I already know it, and they're coming too fast. The only other thing I wanna touch on is there's been a lot of interest, as you can imagine, around elections and election judges and, and those kinds of things. So I think civic and public participation in government is really good. So I encourage you to pay attention to what's going on with elections and, and as you select election judges and that, just pay attention there. That's really all I have, unless you guys got something you wanna talk about. And I thoroughly enjoy serving with some of your people on the Cannon Valley Trail Board. We, we have a good time there, and we're getting a lot done. We're getting a lot done on that project, and, and it continues to move forward, and we're glad to do, to be involved in that. Thanks.
Thanks, Brad.
Brad.
Okay. Turn it over to Lauren Diane, the EDA Annual Report.
If I can get this fired up. It recognizes my face, that's a good sign. Here we go. Okay, good evening. Diane and I are gonna tag team this tonight. Last year, I did do the EDA and the planning and zoning. Is this, this is on? Oh, so, okay. So this year, I am gonna do the EDA Annual Report, just kinda recap what happened last year, and then Diane is going to step in, and she's gonna cover the planning and zoning part of the what happened with the licensing and permitting last year. So with that, our commissioners last year for the EDA Board was Luke Corman was our president, Amy Domback, Vice President, John Dahl, Treasurer, Matt Montgomery was our city council liaison, and John Althoff was, as the mayor, and they are all voting members. Non-voting staff was Neil Jensen, our city administrator, Diane Howard, our zoning administrator, and myself as the EDA Coordinator-Specialist, and I do the minutes, I'm the secretary. I'm not gonna do the background, I'll just save some time. So as far as the grants go, so I did put these into some categories this year as far as what was awarded, what are some that are pending, and then what was denied as far as grants. So, so as far as what was awarded, so I'm in a, I partnered with Kyle this year, so Kyle, you get a, I mean, I'm not gonna take all the credit. It was a partnership that we had, but there were some marketing dollars out there from Explore Minnesota last year, and because we aren't a tourist bureau, the EDA and the city, we can't apply for that. So working with Kyle kinda helped her with the narrative and kind of outlining how we would allocate those funds if the city were to get those, if the chamber were to get those funds. But there was $1,250 for Phase 2 of a crisis tourism grant for advertising, and that was to recover from the pandemic. They were awarded, was it $1,000? What did you get for the Phase 1 of that, Kyle? Do you remember, in 2020?
It was $1,000.
Okay, so they were awarded $1,000 in 2020, so in Phase, then they did do a second round. Then there was a $10,000 recovery grant awarded. Then there was a $10,000 recovery grant awarded that she is currently working on allocating those funds for 20, that can be used for 2022. And then there's a $7,500 marketing tourism grant that was awarded in '21, again for use in 2022. So, those will all help to use, whether it's in digital marketing, print advertising, or in radio, to help, again, drive some attention to the Cannon Falls area. The Minnesota Department of Natural Resources, we did receive $126,000 for the Regional Trails Connection Grant, and that was awarded in 2021. And we're hoping that that construction will still take place yet this year in 2022. And that will connect the gravel, the only gravel part of the trail that starts at the top of Hannah's Bend, where the Mill Towns Trail ends. And it will connect that gravel patch of, through Hannah's Bend Park to the city trails connection, so that we'll have a nice seamless paved trail from Lake Billsby out all the way through Cannon Falls to Red Wing on the Cannon Valley Trail. The Goodyear County Housing Trust, this was on behalf of the Cannon Falls Housing Initiative. We did receive $15,000 to help put the land of the most recent schoolhouse project into the land trust, which helped reduce the price of that home for a qualifying family to make that house much more affordable. Grants that are currently pending is the Goodyear County Broadband Partnership Program, and that is to help, that, that ask is for $42,500 to expand and reinforce the communication ring on the water tower to, for the additional broadband communication equipment, which will increase the unserved and underserved population in the area. And then the other one that is pending is the John Birch Park Retaining Wall Bonding Bill. We made a presentation to the bonding committee when the, that was for the House, for $469,000 to rehabilitate the limestone retaining wall and also construct a new first base dugout and also the concrete seating at John Birch Park. So, we did make the governor's recommendation list, but we will not know until about May if we actually made the cut on that or not. So, that would be part of a phased project, but that would really be a big win for us if we were to be able to get that done. So, that project wouldn't happen in '22, but at least we would know that we have those funds secured. And then as far as a grant that was denied was from Smith, and that was for a small towns grant. I'd asked for $4,300 to create a video series showcasing our Cannon Roots, local food producers in the area. I was wanting to show the journey, kind of like the life cycle, if you will, if you want, if we wanted to use Ferndale Market as an example. The turkey being processed at Lawrence Meats and then also being used at Rob Bistro or by Sustain, whatever. So, but I was denied, but you know what? I'll take, I'll take the wins that we were awarded and lose the $4,000 that I wasn't awarded on that, so. So, we'll see what 2022 brings for grant writing. As far as business activity, Market Properties, doing business as Paradise Products, they did purchase the Robinson, the former Robinson Outdoors building. And they do have an option on the two parcels of property that the city owns directly north of that. And what Paradise Products does is that they actually produce a ready-made sauce called Sauces in a Hurry. So, we're hoping once they get up and going that they will become part of our local foods initiative as well. And then they, like I said, they have an option to purchase those two properties and hope to expand and build in the next couple of years. Keller Bartman Properties did sign a purchase agreement to redevelop the, the former Cannon Falls Truck Stop to, for a 79-unit market rate apartment building. And that project is continuing to, to move forward. Rogue Equities, they signed up an option to purchase the 4.3 acres from the EDA in the industrial park, and that space is between Sweet Harvest and the Lawrence Meats Building. And they are working on getting a lease agreement signed with the hope to build a 50,000-square-foot warehouse or distribution center. Their option does expire next month, so we're hoping that they'll be able to produce that signed lease agreement. Otherwise, their option will expire and it'll go back on the market. And then Magnolia Animal Clinic opened in mid-November, and they're on the south end of town. They're leasing right now. They have a four-year lease, I believe, in their space. And the EDA did finance their new x-ray machine for $37,600. As far as business subsidies with our EDA revolving loan fund, we ended the year with And we have $388,169 in outstanding loans. We've got all, the loan recipients are all listed for you right there. We have, let's see, and I think that we had, at the end of the year, we had, one, Aqualand had paid theirs off. And since then, we have Anytime Fitness, they have paid theirs off as well. So, we have one, two, three, four, we have five outstanding right now. As far as our EDA properties, this one technically is city-owned. These are the two that are directly north of the Robinson, the former Robinson Outdoor space. These are the ones that we do have signed option agreements on. This would be in the industrial park. The one right to the south, I don't know if I can, if I can circle right here, this is where the new Cannon Bell's Cheese Factory is. So, this would be directly across the land, across the way, and then this would be the Steiner Building, just to give you some reference. This would be northeast of that property. This is, this is Sweet Harvest right here. And then this would be Lawrence Meats, so that's the space right in between. That's the 4.3 acres. This would be the former Lee Chevrolet Lot. And then this was the former Cannon Ball Lot. Old picture, still has the buildings on it. As far as the Goodyear County Business and Nonprofit Relief Grant Program, obviously 2020 was full of COVID relief grant programs. At the end of 2020, yes, 2020? I'm trying to get my years straight here. At the end of 2020, the state did allocate some more funds out to different counties. And the money that Goodyear County had that they'd reallocated to small business relief was $894,337. And of those funds, Cannon Falls, it did receive, or 25 businesses in Cannon Falls did receive $242,500. And that was actually 27% of those total funds that were allocated. So, that was a nice little chunk of that, of those funds that were distributed. And it was, again, it was nice to be able to be part of that program, to be able to distribute that to our, our local businesses and nonprofits. As far as marketing efforts, again, you know, that's one of my favorite pieces, is being able to really showcase Cannon Falls and to shine the light on, you know, what makes Cannon Falls a beautiful place to visit and a beautiful place to live. So, being able to showcase, you know, these are some of my favorite photos that we have of Cannon Falls, whether it's Lake Billsby Dam, the Cannon Valley Trail, or John Birch Park. But being able to show, you know, use these in ads, I think is really a wonderful, wonderful way to really showcase Cannon Falls. So, just a few little highlights that we had. Senator Tina Smith, her assistant, Bree Mackey, had actually reached out and wanted to know of a couple of different local businesses that had received PPP loans and how they used those funds to kind of help them survive the pandemic and how to help, they use them to help pivot during the pandemic. So, I connected them with Tillian. So, she stepped in to visit with Ryan and Chris at Tillian. And they also stopped in and had lunch at Nick Steiner that day. So, I didn't get a picture of that, but anyway, so they did send me this picture. The trail did have a nice blog post about Cannon Falls and the Cannon Valley Trail, and that was on their digital platform. And it showed kind of the journey of them stop, starting at the trailhead here in Cannon Falls, stopping at Tillian, doing the trail journey on the Cannon Valley Trail, and then stopping in Red Wing and stopping at some of the businesses there, too. And then the feast, there are two-page advertials, always, I think, a really impressive layout, showing all the different businesses, the local food and beverage producers that we have in Cannon Falls, and then also pairing them with the Cannon Valley Trail, the lake and the river. Some other things, like I said, we've got the, the Cannon Roots, I'll, hopefully this will load, the Cannon Falls Cannon Roots webpage, again, featuring our local food and beverage producers that we have. This was created with the broadband, the Blandon-Broadband Grant that we had. So, this was created back in 2020. And again, this really is very low maintenance, as long as the businesses maintain their own pages, their, their webpages and their Facebook pages. It really is a great place to drive people to, and then they can hop on it themselves and check out those different businesses. And then we've also built in the Cannon Valley Trail information, Cannon River information, which would link to if you wanted to go kayaking or canoeing. And then also Lake Billsby information that takes you to like the campground. And then it also goes to our Sherpa page, which I know that I've talked about in the past, where you can go to create your own little adventure. But this is where people have created adventures within Cannon Falls, whether it's touring the murals, doing a little chili crawl, or cross-country skiing on the trail, doing a tour through downtown Cannon Falls, supporting local foods and restaurants, having fun on the river or on the lake, going to the winery, hitting the bakery, whatever it might be, going out and doing, picking grapes out at the vineyard, or hitting the Lynx locally. So, it's just kind of a really fun way that we can showcase some of those things that are happening in Cannon Falls, whether you want to spend the day, you know, half a day or whatever. We've also got a Facebook page for Cannon Roots and Instagram page and the Sherpa that I just shown you as well. Like I had mentioned before with Kyle at the Chamber, we were able to use some of the dollars last year to partner with some co-op advertising through Explore Minnesota, where we get discounted rates in certain publications. So, we did use some of those dollars for Explore Minnesota, the Spring Travel Issue, Minnesota Trails Spring Edition, and also Minneapolis-St. Paul Magazine. So, we're trying to reach outside of our zip code and try to really get in front of people that are looking for, again, you know, you don't have to pack a lunch to get here and trying to spread that message. Cannon Falls isn't that far to go for a little day trip. And again, trying to use this imagery to really kind of get people's attention. Again, I just think this is a really impressive slide showing all, you know, our little town of, you know, 4,200 people and the different producers that we have here, I think is another thing that I like to kind of shout from the rooftops, so. As far as our community television channel, just a few different things. Obviously, the Community Falls, or the Cannon Falls Community TV streams our council planning T, planning meetings, local events, and sports activities. Currently, there's 1,540 subscribers on YouTube, which I thought was really kind of a high number. I thought that was good. And then it helps to keep residents informed of upcoming meetings, events, and public project information. And the previous recordings of obviously meetings like this can be viewed on YouTube or Facebook. And then it also has its own Facebook platform as well, and there's 615 Facebook followers. The city website's always a work in progress. If we get any recommendations or requests or whatnot, you know, we try to make sure that we make it as user-friendly as possible. We want to make sure that it's, that the experience is as good for everyone as possible. So, one thing that we did take note of this year was the recommendation to put the city code and ordinances on the front page and make it a quick link. And I think that, I mean, even from my standpoint, I think that it's really nice to have that right on the front page instead of trying to navigate and find it elsewhere, so. As far as social media for the city, we have 1,460 followers, which is up 185 from the year before. The audience, the age and gender doesn't really change. It's usually a 25-75 split, heavily weighted in women over men using it. And this is just the breakdown of how our users break down over the, the local towns around us. As far as our economic development goals for '21, we talked about annexation for development, and we were able to actually annex 12 acres into the city, and that was the Hayes property off of County 17. And as far as housing developments, we had Jablonski's Towering Bluffs, we had the Hayes Development and county land over by Mayo Clinic as potential areas for housing. And multifamily housing was also one of our options. I have it kind of tinted because we don't physically have it here yet, but it's, like I said, with the apartment complex kind of in the process of coming to fruition, it's, it's, like I said, it's in the works. So, it's not crossed off, but it's in the works. Pursuing a data center or cold storage, that again would be a really big win if we were to be able to get something like that. So, that was on our list for last year. And then the McCannon Ball Lot redevelopment, that again was one of our goals for 2021 that we had set. And again, it's shaded. So, it's not crossed off yet, but it's in process. So, the other thing that we had, and no, I'm taking up a lot of time, but we did also, from the Blandon Grant that we had a few years ago, we had allocated about $4,500 to create a new promotional video for Cannon Falls. And that, so basically, I use the tool that Girl Cannon Falls had done a few years ago to really kind of help showcase, you know, not just the area, but also what the area can bring as far as recreation, areas for development. And that's what this video also will show, too. So, if I haven't sent it out to you, I'll certainly send you a link to that. We will, excuse me, we will be, you know, embedding it on our website, or I know that Kyle had put it on her Chamber website when we'd used the Girl Cannon Falls one before. So, we will make sure that it is accessible. But I don't have it live anywhere at the moment. We just got it a couple of weeks ago. So, for 2022, our economic development goals, housing, of course, is our number-one priority. So, looking to acquire or purchase property for development. We did create a housing committee. And that way, we can meet as regularly and as often as we would like to. And so, that way, we can really kind of keep that ball moving and keep that conversation going. And taking steps to correct Sandstone Ridge, there is a Sandstone Committee that, again, we can kind of keep that, that conversation going as well. Annexation, obviously, we want to help to increase the tax base of the city and to also create housing and business development opportunities in the, in the city as well. Goal three is business retention. My goal is to be able to go out and meet with businesses, not just necessarily our current revolving loan fund recipients, but also meeting with other businesses that, you know, maybe they're candidates for expansion, you know, checking in with them to see what their business growth needs are. Maybe they don't think that they're on that, that verge of expanding, but having those conversations with them and trying to figure out what, what are their needs and how can we help? And also just to build those relationships. The last couple of years, obviously, it's almost my two-year anniversary here, but, you know, it's been, fortunately, I'm from here, so I know a lot of the business owners. But it's been kind of hard to go out and to build some of those relationships otherwise. So, hopefully, it'll be able to get actually out and into those businesses. And then goal four is, we did have that TIF district established out in the industrial park last year, and that project fell through. So, we would really like to prioritize selling that lot this year. We do have three years to certify that district. It's not certified, but we really would like to make that a priority, to focus on promoting that, that piece of property. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Diane, and she's going to talk to you about planning and zoning. So, thank you for your time.
Thanks, Laura.
Thank you.
Our Planning Commission last year, the chairman was Mike Daniels, Bruce Hema, Glenn Lundell, John Christensen, Derek Lundell, Bill Duncan, Matt Montgomery. And this year, we do have Steve Gesmi as our new chair. We will still have Bruce Hema, John Christensen. We will have Matt Montgomery joining us. Thank you. And Diane Johnson in the back there. I just want to take this time to thank you all for your partnership. We really, truly appreciate you. This last year, we had three variances issued in 2021. The first one was a variance for a sign height allowance for Carstens The first one was a variance for sign height allowance for Carstensen and Son Trucking. The second one was a variance for fence height allowance with E. Juno and Erica Nyagam. Sorry, I'm probably going to kill that one. Um, the third one is a variance to allow minimum lot footage adjustments for the Good Hugh County Habitat for Humanity, and that was a house on St. Clair Street. There were two conditional use permits granted in twenty-twenty-one. The first one was a conditional use permit to allow a mural at one-one-four Street North. That's um, the wall right on the Chamber office. The second one was to allow a conditional use permit for veterinarian clinic. That would be the Magnolia Veterinary Clinic. And that was at David Olson's at Artisan Plaza. There are four, there were four administrative subdivisions. The first one was a lot split at nine fifteen North Sixth Street for Babe O'Gorman. The second one was an administrative subdivision lot combination at seventeen seventeen and seventeen thirteen North Highway Twenty. This was for Nate's Garage. The third one was for a lot split at twelve hundred Sixth Street North. This was also for Good Hugh County Habitat for Humanity, and this was also for the house at St. Clair Street. Um, the fourth one was an administrative subdivision lot split for three hundred Carlson Road, Josie and Zach Hayes. This came after the annexation on that property. We had one concept plan for a PUD granted in twenty-twenty-one. This was for a seventy-nine unit apartment building at four fifteen Hickory Drive. Um, that one is an R-for PUD, just to make that clear for Keller Bartman. There was one annexation granted in twenty-twenty-one, and that again was for three hundred Carlson Road for Josie and Zach Hayes. We did have one preliminary platton rezone approved in twenty-twenty-one for Greg Jablonski for towering bluffs like Laura had mentioned. We did have three zoning amendments to the zoning code in twenty-twenty-one. One was ordinance three seventy-five relating to sign height and parking and loading services. The second one was for an ordinance three seventy-eight relating to sexually oriented uses. And the third one was an ordinance three eighty-one relating to conditional uses in the B-two highway business district. And for that one, we brought in trucking and auto sales into the B-two. We have a lot of uses that need to be permitted in our city. Um, you'll see a big list of those there. We had five assigned permits last year, seventeen fence permits, um, twenty-two residential excavation permits, thirty-one commercial utility, um, there would also be excavation permits. We had ten solicitor permits. Those were up quite high. Um, we had nine chicken permits and two firework permits. We also have to um, quite a few licensing uses that we have. We had nine on-sale licenses, four off-sale licenses, one brewer taproom license, eight refuse roll-off licenses, seven massage licenses, eight tobacco licenses, fourteen excavator licenses, and one mobile food truck license. And we also did five new addresses in the city. That brings us to our building permits. We had twelve single-family homes this year, which was actually pretty impressive considering that we don't have a lot of lots left in the city. Um, our commercial permits were down just a little bit, but I do foresee those going much higher, obviously, next year with Keller Bartman coming in. The three um, commercial permits that we did have were the Cannon Bells, the Grand O-two, and the Magnolia Vet Clinic. Otherwise, we had quite a few miscellaneous building permits for a total of two hundred and one permits was, the number was actually really good. Evaluation maybe wasn't as high as some years, but let's go to that building comparison chart. Um, I broke down six years for you here. Two thousand sixteen, as you can see, that was a really slow year. I'm not really sure what happened there. Two thousand seventeen, we definitely rebounded nicely. We had a lot of new commercial that went in that year, and that didn't even include the hospital, I believe that was built in two thousand seventeen as well, because that was um, inspected by the state. In two thousand eighteen, we fell a little bit. Two thousand nineteen, we fell a little bit, um, rebounded a little bit again in twenty-twenty-one. This year, we fell just a little bit, but like I said, I think with Keller Bartonman next year, that number's going to go back up again. Does anybody have any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Diane. Okay. Story about that, it's, it's good to uh, get as much into Twin Cities as we can, you know, uh, this literature about Cannon Falls reminds me of that Twin Cities lie when Jimmy from Art- Artisan Plaza was on there one time a couple of years ago. And he was trying to get people to Cannon Falls, you know, come and see what's, what we've got to offer. Jimmy was saying, you know, people in the Twin Cities, they don't know where Cannon Falls is. And Jimmy says, hello, people in the Twin Cities think it's three miles north of Arkansas. Well, I got friends in the Twin Cities, you know, and that's about what they think, you know. It's a thirty-minute drive. We got to advertise it to get them down here, so. Okay, thank you. Okay, let's get into the consent agenda. Consent agenda items may be adopted under one motion as presented or maybe removed or discussion resolution as council business. Bear with me, it's a long consent agenda. Item A is just and collect correct claims for the accounting period ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one. Item B, just and correct claims for the accounting period ending February tenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Item C, minute meetings for the January eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-two special city council meeting. Item D, minute meetings for the January eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-two city council meeting. Item E, approve the bluff drive and river road engineering contracts. Item F, resolution twenty-six fifteen, accepting a donation from Invenergy Cannon Falls LLC for fifteen hundred dollars to the ambulance department. Item G, resolution twenty-six sixteen, accepting a donation from Invenergy Cannon Falls LLC for fifteen hundred dollars to the police department. Item H, resolution twenty-six seventeen, accepting a donation from Invenergy Cannon Falls LLC for fifteen hundred dollars to the fire department. Item I, approve a zoning administrator. Item J, resolution twenty-six eighteen, terminating the development agreement with Georges on the Rocks LLC and decertifying the tax increment financing, financing district number two-dash-seven. Item K, approve an unscheduled part-time employees policy. Item L, approve the hiring of a full-time paramedic. Item M, approve a wastewater treatment plant, raw wastewater pit pump. And item N, approve a sewer mainline televising. Is there anything the council would like to pull down?
I'd like to pull down M.
Okay, item, the.
Pit pump.
Pit pump. We'll put that on our council business under as item B. Anything else?
It doesn't need to be pulled down, but I have a question for Neil about J without pulling it down. That's the uh, TIFF District out there. Does that in any way affect Magnolia Vet Clinic? Okay.
Okay, anything else? Well, I take a motion, approve the consent agenda minus item M.
So move.
Motion by Gesmi is second by Bringle to approve the consent agenda minus item M, which is the pit pump at the waste treatment plant. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Carried. Okay, well, get into council business. Item A, the solid waste contract scheduled work session. Neil?
At the end of the year, we're going to have a uh, our recycling contract come to uh, expiration, so a couple of council members have asked me to uh, bring forth a work session on solid waste and recycling contract. I know there's some uh, some thoughts on, on doing a single license, single hauler in town, um, and I just kind of wanted to know some of your opinions, um, so maybe if we do schedule this work session, that I can gather up some information, um, before we, if we do a, a work session. So I, I'd just like to have the conversation on, on your thoughts on this. Um, right now, it's, it's open, as you seen in Diane's presentation, there was eight, um, I believe licensed haulers in town. Um, if we went with a single license hauler, uh, it used to be that the playing field was not quite fair because of uh, of where large solid waste haulers would haul their uh, their solid waste. Some of them would head to Iowa, some would go elsewhere. But with uh, Good Hugh County now proposing a uh, uh, in-house where they have to haul it to Red Wing, um, the tipping fees will, will be the same for, if we do a contract for everybody. And I don't know where we're at with that, uh, as far as uh, um, I know, I think there's some, some legal lawsuit that might be still going on, but eventually that will uh, get approved. Um, it's been going on for quite a few years, but eventually it'll be there and, and it will uh, it will level the playing field for large and small haulers. So just, all I want is maybe a, a thought or two, so if I could uh, get some information gathered up for uh, if we do this work session.
I think we should talk about it. I've been a, like you say, you got eight haulers in this town now, and they're on the streets, you know, five days a week.
Lot of trucks.
And they're, they're ruining our roads.
Lots of trucks.
We went with one hauler and got a fair rate. I don't know why we wouldn't do that.
Yeah. Lot less confusion.
Yeah.
Certainly doesn't hurt to at least talk about it.
Exactly.
I, I agree that a single hauler would be nice for residential, more commercials a little different animal, but.
Yeah.
As long as this recycling contract's done at the end of the year, let's get going on it and see if we can.
I agree.
Come up with a way to do it.
Yeah.
Yep.
Lots of trucks.
I think we should schedule something and uh, move forward with discussion anyway.
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
I think everybody's in agreement with that, so.
I think so, yeah.
Let's do it.
And, and you've got it listed here, Neil, for a, a work session on this at five-thirty uh, on March first for our council meeting.
Okay.
Need a, a motion to approve that. Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the work session on March first at five-thirty.
Second.
Motion by Duncan, a second by Montgomery to have a special work session on the solid waste contract, five-thirty on March first. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? Carried. Okay. Okay, item B is Stevie Pullitown, approve a wastewater treatment plant, raw wastewater pit pump.
Uh, Dan, um, the one we replaced roughly.
December.
December, right there. Um, isn't the cost of this one a lot higher than the last one?
It went up six hundred dollars.
Oh, I, I thought it was almost double.
It was eleven-seven, something like that in, in twenty-twenty-one.
That's just what's happening with inflation.
Or I'm sorry, nineteen thousand seven hundred.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it went up six hundred dollars in that short time.
I thought it was just a little over ten thousand.
No, no, not quite that much.
Okay, with that, I'll approve. I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Gesmi and a second by Bill Duncan to uh, approve the uh, wastewater pit pump. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? Carried. Okay, let's get into reports. Uh, Kyle, Chamber?
Good evening. The first thing I would like to talk about tonight is the twenty-twenty-two calendar of events. And this is a community calendar, so it's not just Chamber events. So we are planning on having our Easter hunt and our fun fests will be in June and in August, and then we'll have open airfares in July and September. Of course, those are depending on construction and what is happening. And so, uh, be watching for those. We do have our golf tournament set for June sixteenth, and that will be at Gopher Hills Golf Course. And. Trick or treat trot, of course, October thirty-first, and then deck the falls and light up Cannon Falls in November and December. And so, um, I do have um, information that we will be having our spring and fall garage sales, excuse me, um, of course, the Cannon Valley Fair. The Wine and Art Festival is coming back this year, and that is that third weekend in July. And that's everything. I will be getting this up onto the Chamber website shortly, and so we just needed to get everyone's input and definite dates. The Cannon Cruisers Car Cruise is July twenty-ninth, so that's the last Friday of July. Any questions about the events calendar for the year? It'll be a busy one. Um, this morning, we had our Chamber breakfast right here in the city council chambers and had a very nice presentation from Jeff Sampson about the school district and how it's moving forward. And at that meeting, we also had the members who were there, um, vote on our Discover Guide twenty-twenty-two cover. And so I wish I could get that. Nope, this way. There we go. Okay. And so, um, small to see, but it is John Birch Park, and that was voted in, most popular, and uh, will be moving forward. This year, we did, um, our ad prices uh, went down from twenty-twenty-one. Um, we received uh, the two grants from Explore Minnesota, and some of those funds are going towards the publication and printing of the Discover Guide. We're also adding on non-member ads. And so anyone who's not a Chamber member can now place ads in the Chamber directory in the Discover Guide. Other questions? That's what I have tonight.
Okay, thank you, Kyle. Uh, Joint Powers Trail Board. Mary Jill had to leave. She just wanted, I just want to mention a few things, how the uh, they just got the results of uh, uh, trail use comparisons, like in two thousand and nineteen, uh, net sales a hundred and twelve thousand, two thousand twenty, a hundred and fifty thousand. Well, last year was a hundred and seventy-two thousand, so people are using the trail and uh, gets bigger every year, so that's good. Um, EDA, Laura, you got anything?
I think you've heard enough from me tonight.
Okay. Park Board, Matt?
Going along with the trail, um, it was proposed that there be a electronic pay station at the trailhead by the gazebo, um, in the city parking lot, um, that is electronic and does not need cash, so uh, so we talked about that. Um, and then some park signs, maybe the ability to uh, get some of our park signs refurbished and maybe do that in a rolling basis, year by year, uh, to have more uniform and up-to-date look.
Very good. Uh, Cable Commission, Steve?
Met on uh, February seventh, and uh, the only item up for discussion was uh, to find another part-time um, techie guy to help. another part-time, um, techie guy to help with their, our, our channel, uh, twelve. We're down to pretty much one person now, so. We advertise that on certain sites, thanks to Laura, and uh, I don't know if we've got any feed, nothing, feedback. So in the meantime, we'll have uh, Neil filling in. Other than that, that's all we talked about.
Okay. Library Board, Laura, anything?
I wasn't able to join yesterday.
Okay. What was it, Nicole?
Yep.
You're on.
So, um, just wanted to let you know things that are going on in the library. We, um, we're gonna be closed Monday because it's President's Day. So, please don't come to the library because we're closed that day, but we're open all of the regular hours. Uh, we have on Wednesdays this month and next month, we have MOOC groups. So, I don't know if you've heard of massive online open courses. And so, we're, we're just letting, if anybody's interested, you can assemble at the library and just kind of participate in this course to learn with a, a group. So, Matthew's doing that. This particular one is Modern Art and Ideas from 11 to 12 every Wednesday morning for a while. And he's also doing uh, Thursday One Astrobiology and the Search for Extracur, Extraterrestrial Life from four to five. And on Fridays, we have Library in Motion. We're doing sighted fitness, which is using paper plates and chairs to get a good workout, just to prove that we don't need a lot of equipment to be able to, to get a really good workout and to make our bodies stronger. We have, that's at noon on Wednesdays through this month and next month. We also have Teen Anime Club every Friday at 3:30. So, you can come, go to the, the corner of the library that is the, the teen area and watch anime. This Saturday, from one to two, we have Chad Lewis doing history of, or Bizarre History of Minnesota. I don't remember if he's actually coming in person or if he's doing this as a Zoom, but he is a really good entertainer. And he's, he's been on a number of TV shows, and I, we've had him for, for past um, library programs. So, if you wanna hear any Bizarre History of Minnesota, please come to this program. We also have Dungeons and Dragons by the fireplace on next Saturday, the 26th, from 10 to 2. And by the way, our fireplace is finished. It has been completely refinished. Please stop by and come see it. Um, we're gonna have some kind of a, a grand ribbon cutting of the new fireplace at some point next month, I think. But, yeah, we had Dan Funk, who is a local artist, doing the tile. Near Strand Custom Cabinets did the woodwork. And um, can't remember the name of the company that we, that is in town that we got our hearthstone from. And it was all paid for with a bequest from um, Bob Molinar. So, we, we thank the Molinar family for paying for this, this finishing. And it's beautiful, so please come stop, come and see it. And that was just a complete aside. Um, we also, next, um, on the 28th, we have Book Club with the Lovely War, and we have Make It Monday Floral Note Cards. And of course, we have Storytimes All The Time Mondays at 10:30 and Thursdays at 10:30. There's a Winnie the Pooh Book Club on Fridays, that is on YouTube. And this Thursday is Harry Potter Book Night. So, we have a lot going on at the library right now, so please stop by. We, we would love to see you. Also, the, um, the government has been sending, or had sent out the KN-90 masks. And Goodhue County uh, asked us if we wanted to distribute them, so we still have some left. They sent out 200 to Cannon Falls, and we have about 50 left. We can give out up to five per household. And the KN-90 masks can be reused five, seven times. Just air them out after every use. And that's everything I've got. If anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Anything? Well, thanks, Nicole.
You're welcome.
Okay, let's go around the horn. Dan?
Uh, just a couple of things. Uh, the ice rinks are in good shape. We're starting to get closer to spring here, so get your skating in if you can. And uh, we're still in a waiting pattern for the pickup and the sluice gates at the wastewater treatment plant. Just kinda holding on for those. Uh, the snowflakes have come out, or taken, been taken down downtown, so spring's right around the corner.
Okay. Diane, anything? Laura? Tim?
I can say something since you haven't seen me for a while. Uh, my pickup that you guys approved way back this summer is hopefully coming at the end of the week, so we'll start getting that outfitted throughout the month of March. Uh, stuff we've still ordered for like the lights and all that is, uh, still backordered like everything else in the world. Um, we're kinda working through, cause this is supposed to be a year that we look at redoing an ambulance, but uh, with the chassis shortages and everything else, I'm trying to come up with options, and then Neil and I will meet and discuss what we should do. But, uh, I'm not too hopeful on getting a ambulance built anytime soon with the chassis problems that they're having, especially when it comes to van chassis. At the state level, uh, I reapply to see if I get appointed for the EMSRB Board to represent uh, the smaller people of Minnesota. And we've been working through a bunch of stuff. Uh, the state hired a new executive director to lead the EMSRB, which is not big in the little uh, local world, but uh, they do give us our regulations and everything else. So we have, nice to have somebody that has experience working with uh, many other states. Uh, this person's very seasoned, so it's kind of exciting because hopefully this will help progress that board forward and just uh, create a better vision uh, for the EMSRB, so. Lastly, uh, the men and women, uh, the ambulance service, they put in a lot of hours. Uh, we had had several resign recently, so we'll hopefully be going out also to look for some more volunteers. Uh, and hopefully, we can get that full-time position uh, filled that you guys approved tonight, so thank you.
Can uh, is it okay if Dan puts a plow bracket on your pickup until he gets his?
We could talk numbers.
Okay, Jeff, you got anything back there?
On behalf of the Police Department, the Ambulance Department, and the Fire Department, we want to thank Invenergy for their donation. Very generous. We really appreciate that. Times are tough and tight for some of our departments. Uh, similar to Tim, we also have a police car that we're trying to get outfitted, but there's some stuff that's just backordered, so we look forward to getting that done, but we just sit and wait until it happens, so. That's all I got.
Very good. Neil?
Just got one, uh, one item. Couple of years ago, you uh, did some solar subscriptions um, with a couple, three, four probably, solar farms. Um, I just want to report uh, that the savings, if you understand how that works, we, we subscribed into these solar farms and uh, we get a deduction from uh, our XL bill. And in 2021, um, the savings was a little over $24,000. So...
Yes.
You made the right decision. And with uh, and with, I think, XL Energy up to the PUC right now, looking for a, a major uh, uh, rate increase, I think we're, we're still gonna do okay. So, that's all.
Very good. Let's go here. Derek, anything? Steve?
Uh, one thing, anybody that's uh, wondering what's going on over at the Park and Ride, that's the uh, they're fitting it for the new electricity to plug in our cars. So that's, that's the, what's going on over there. That's all I got.
Okay, Laura?
No, I'm good.
Matt?
Uh, I just wanna say thank you to everybody who showed up and voted for the referendum. Um, regardless of what the outcome was, our, our public involvement uh, speaks volumes about our community. A lot of people showed up that day, and thank you to everybody who helped with uh, the election process. Um, and yeah, I, I think it's great that we're showing the commitment to our school for the next decade for technology. Uh, we're staying committed to that plan, and I'm really, I'm satisfied with how we all showed up and the result.
Very good. Bill?
Uh, yes, as uh, some of you know, we did not have our first meeting of the month uh, because it was caucus night. Um, last week in the Beacon, uh, Mr. Gorman had a letter to the editor criticizing uh, Neil for calling off the meeting, saying that that's something that the council should have done. But that is not true. I'm gonna read to you a state statute that deals with caucuses, and the, it's a sub, uh, it says limits on local government meetings. It says, "No special taxing district, governing body, school board, county board of commissioners, township board, or city council may conduct a meeting after 6:00 PM on the day of a major political party precinct caucus." So, Mr. Gorman was 100% wrong. What I would like to see, as I see our representative from the Beacon is here, you have to start fact-checking some of these things, cause it's leading to misinformation or outright lies. And uh, that has an effect on everybody in this town when you do that. So please do that uh, in the future, cause the Beacon has been very poor in fact-checking many items that have appeared in their paper. That's it.
Okay. I just wanted to mention, and I should've said it while Karen was here, this Small Cities Development Program. That's an excellent program. I've had half a dozen people come up to me and already asking about it. Um, it won't happen, I don't think, no, so Mayor June, but that's an excellent program. And uh, thanking the county and that, whoever's involved in that, cause it's a good program. Just a couple of meeting schedule notes. Um, the only two things that are gonna happen before our next council meeting is on the Thursday, this Thursday, February 17th, we got a finance committee meeting, and on February 22nd, Tuesday, a Joint Powers Trail Board meeting. Those are the only two meetings that we got before our next council meeting, so I'll bring those up. Has anybody got anything else? If not, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Second.
Motion by Duncan, a second by Montgomery, adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.